Okay, according to the clock on the computer it is six o'clock. So I'd like to call the Sumter County Council Reunion Meeting for Tuesday, July 25th. To order, Ms. Dean, would you please give us an invitation? May we all stand and please remain standing for the prayer for this meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, dear kind heavenly Father, we do thank you for allowing this council to come together again to do the business that you've ordained and appointed for us to do. We invite your presence as we begin this meeting. And we ask your blessings upon us and upon our county administrator, his staff, our clerk, our, and everyone other beside my voice, all of those who saw fit to come see local government in action. We would like to especially ask a blessing upon the service member who has come, taken his time out to be with us this evening to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. We thank you for bringing him through his years of service and your continued blessings upon him and his family. We ask that you bless all men and women who are still serving in uniform, especially those who are serving in harm's way. Let them know that they are not a opponent. And as we consider the items set up before us, please give us wisdom, understanding, clarity of mind, and help us to make decisions according to your will. These are all blessings we thank and ask in your name. Amen.
Tonight, we'll be led in the pledge of allegiance by retired US Air Force Lieutenant Colonel Denning of these sides. He served our country from March 1959 to March 1981. He served in Vietnam War and retired from Sherwood Forest Base as a tactical fighter pilot. He and his service dog Sparky enjoy visiting sick and elderly veterans throughout Sumter County. He currently lives in Sumter County Council District Number Two. Thank you for your service there.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And to the relevant or jurisdictional assets, one nation under one law, in the federal liberty of justice for all.
This is planning on the end change to get your motion to approve our agenda. So moved. It's been moved to property segment that we approve our agenda for tonight in a discussion. Are there none all in favor, please say aye. And motion to approve our minutes for a regular meeting for Tuesday, July 25th. So moved. Sorry. It's been moved to property segment that we approve our minutes from Tuesday, July 25th in a discussion. Are there none all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say aye. Land use matters. This is RZ 2310. And I tell the public that we will hold a public hearing if this is on request prior to county council taking action on second reading.
Good evening. RZ 2310 is a request of 1350 South Pike East. The applicant is Wathan Investments LLC, represented by Paul Weisenski. He is here this evening to speak on behalf of the request as the property owner. This is actually a request to rezonate about 26.6 acres of a part of a larger tax map from residential six to general residential 1350 South Pike East is the approximate address of the property. This is the area question. It's the undeveloped land base between Irisland Mobile Home Park and Sherwood Forest residential subdivision fronting on South Pike East. It is technically wooded today as there has been no development on the property and is for orientation purposes without label Irisland as well as the Sherwood Forest subdivision. Of both of this 26.6 acres is actually the residential six. There is a small portion to the south end of the property that is already zoned, general residential. This request would be to bring that whole day that you see as R6 currently into the GR zoning district. As a little bit of background, the applicant is seeking this rezoning because the owners of Irisland are looking to either expand that existing park or to develop a new one. The general residential zoning district is only one of two districts in the county that actually allow manufactured home parks, the other being the general commercial zoning district. They have requested the GR district because it's more in line with the developing area as opposed to trying to build a general commercial establishment. When we look at potential dense development, generally in the county sewer and water are not available, however, the city is in the periphery of the city. And there are areas in the county that is part of the community that the city of Sumter does serve with sewer and water infrastructure as outside city customers. There has been conversation with the city of Sumter about the possibility of severing this site should the development, there be reselling the approved and development take place. There may require a significant investment from the potential developer to tie into that sewer and water infrastructure, but it is conceivably available at this site. When we look at development, we look at environmental factors based on the national wetlands inventory, which is a higher level mapping process using remote sensing. It does appear that there may be freshwater forested wetlands on this property. Prior to any development or as part of a development process, they wouldn't have to go through a wetlands delineation on that property and comply with any standards with their own corporate engineers if it's found to be jurisdictional. This is what the property looks like today. It's fairly heavily wooded. As part of a development process, we would likely require them to do a tree survey to see whether there are any historic or significant trees within the property or if they are being saved to develop around. We would also encourage any development that happens on this site to retain perimeter buffering and enhance it with new plantings to maintain buffering between them and any future or existing developments. When we look at rezoning requests, we look at the common use of land use plan design makes property as in this particular instance, the 2040 plan does designate as a river development finding area. This river development finding area has been applied to large swaths of the community where we see a variety of future development where a mix of commercial and residential uses coexist. So in this particular instance, rezoning to general residential, which does allow a variety of use types, in particular residential use types, is compatible with the 2040 plan. The planning division will recommend approval of this request. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Rudman? Here in the aisle. Open up public hearing. Public hearing for RZ 2310 is now open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please proceed to the podium. State your name for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is the county council. My name is Paul Weisenski. I'm an attorney, practicing law here in Sumter since 1987. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Wathan Investments LLC that has made this rezoning request. With me is Dale Lawrence. He's a member manager of Wathan Investments. Wathan Investments is applied for the rezoning change as discussed by Ms. Rudman. C.D. Spangler from Charlotte, North Carolina bought this property and the property that now is the Sherwood Forest subdivision back at beginning, late 1959, and developed Sherwood Forest between that time, probably about the mid 1960s for the most part. They didn't do anything with the rest of the property. And then in 1999, they contacted Dale Lawrence, who was a local real estate, who was a local real estate agent at the time, and asked him about them selling out the property. So Mr. Lawrence set up Wathan Investments LLC and then had buy the remainder of the property that C.D. Spangler owned, which was the 90 acres, the 90 acres next to and behind Sherwood Forest, about 13 lots that were scattered in Sherwood Forest that were still vacant, and the property along Little John Lane is the back road in Sherwood Forest subdivision. And Wathan had built, had all those, all those empty lots, had houses built on all of them, and then redeveloped the Little John Lane and all the houses that are back on that road. And then the remainder of the 90 acres has sat still while it sold about the last, the back 60 acres of that on a long-term contract starting in about 2010. And, but still retained roughly 29 acres on the front part of the property. Now, earlier this spring, UMH that owns the Irisland Mobile Home Park contacted Mr. Lawrence and expressed an interest in purchasing the property. As Mr. Lawrence indicated he was interested in selling it, and as you, as you probably remember, Irisland Mobile Home Park used to be called Golden Attar Mobile Home Park, and back then it was not a very attractive facility. UMH bought this property back in January of 2021 and has really fixed it up. It's, it's got, the roads are in good condition, the houses are seen to be in good condition. There's a variety of people living in there. I rode through it a couple of weeks ago and I saw several guys in a military uniform.
Mr. Lawrence, can I wrap it up?
Yes, I, okay, thank you very much. In any event, we think that this would be very, very advantageous to the county for several reasons. It's compatible with the, or the possible development by UMH, the, would be compatible with the existing properties around it. It would add to the tax base for the county. Irisland's about $50,000 a year in real estate tax. And so we ask that the, we ask the county to consider favorably this request. But thank you for that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Regina Tucker, and I'm here to speak against having the mobile home park built in that area. This is a community of homes, homeowners that work hard to get their homes. It is unfair that it's going to be profits over people. You do not want our homes, when the community will increase that way, crime will go up. I went and got statistics of crime that was in the area last year. Last year, they had five mortal deaths, five burglies, three lawsuits, 15 domestics, one shot fired, and five crimes classified as other. And I got this statistic from the sheriff's office. More people than would any day this community will bring up the crime, will bring up the litter, the pollution, all that can, negatives that can happen in a community when it's increased. If they need more housing in the area, Sumter has, and I did run on the census, it has about 43,000, 44,000 people in Sumter. I'm not sure why we need more mobile homes when we have retreats not completed. They still have places to rent, the companion, the Palisades, the flats, the liquid, the Broad Trains, they all have apartments available. So I'm not sure what the need is, the why we must mess with the, the wet areas with the animals that's in it, let alone, it's all swampy over there. This is, I don't even see how it would be livable, it would be mobile homes sinking in the mud after a few years. And like I said, I believe that crime will go up. We work hard for our homes, the homeowners, to have this coming in and bring down the liquid. And none of that, if I'm not mistaken, if you change it from a rezoning from a residential and you're now businesses, somebody can now take back their whole, a barrage. So you're changing the whole complexity of a community that is doing okay, in my opinion. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Hi, I live in the Sherwood Forest Division. My house is right along the wood line. My husband and I, we bought our house, two and a half years ago.
Say your name, but ready.
Oh, Tracy Moore, sorry.
Tracy what?
Moore, M-O-R, yes. And when we bought our house, that was the big attraction that we had to our house, was when we went into our backyard, that's all we saw was trees. And it was quiet, we'd be along with our neighbors. And our whole community back there is very tight-knit. I have a lady that drives by my house and puts plants on my front porch because she always sees all my plants. She comes, she drops them off, and basically most of the time they're dead, so I bring them back to life. And I feel that if you guys put a mobile home back there, it's going to be just like how Irisland looks right now. It's basically one right after another, and I don't want to work my next 30 years paying off this home and have to come out to my backyard and see mobile homes all behind it. I understand that we need housing, but there has to be other places that we can put it that isn't taking away from what we already have. We can help the other areas rather than going and tearing down all the wildlife. I mean, we have deer back there, you know, I just feel that it could be put other places than where it is. And just, it's going to bring more people in, it's going to, you know, I have a two-year-old and an eight-month-old. And if this comes in, I'm not going to let my kids out in the front yard. And to me, I shouldn't have to pay my mortgage for the next 30 years and have that with my children when, when I bought, what I bought, it was with them in mind. My husband has lived here his entire life, and if this comes in, we, my husband and I have already talked that we will be selling our house and moving because we don't want this in our backyard. And I think I speak for all my neighbors that did come because I know I've talked to them, and I know a lot of them are upset about what they are trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Speaking against it being rezoned. Read in behind it is, like Lady Parker told me this morning, just saying, early this year, we clear cut all of the forest on the back side of Sherwood Forest. I live on Little John myself. When I recently moved in, it had a nice, good forest. Now when you walk out my front door, you see a couple of trees and just clear cut top of trees over there. It's driven out wildlife that used to live there, woodpeckers that used to live there, they're all gone now. We used to have an increased crime rate, and watching them sneak through the woods trying to get over into Sherwood Forest from the mobile home, back when I moved in in 08, was an issue that slowly started to go down. Now taking that buffer zone out of the way, moving even closer, I've heard talk about fiancees. We're trying to get out of there now if this is what happens, but I do not want it. Our community, our little neighborhood, be butted right up against a mobile park. That, and we don't want to see our property values drop due to trailer parking right next to residential homes. That's my biggest concern, watching the property values shoot down because of it. And that is all.
Could you state your name again, sir?
Chad Snaitley.
Snaitley?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Snaitley. Anyone else wishing to speak to council?
Good evening. My name is Irene Lucky Harris, and I live on Wellington Road in Sherwood Forest. And I have been on Wellington Road since 1981. And I truly believe that, to piggyback on what the others have said, that crime rate will increase if the Sherwood Park is allowed to be set up in the area that's being proposed. And that's my major concern. And I have raised my children there, and they are gone. And I'm there, my house has been, I've been, I bought my house, I'm comfortable, and I'm too old to move again, but I think that I would have to if that happens because the major thing, my major concern is crime rate. And, and I think that a, a mobile home park is an attractive nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
My name is Raymond Lowey. I live on West Sherwood. I have been there for numerous years, before here, though. And I'm satisfied there, I'm happy there, my wife is happy there, and we have been talking about this increase of this influx of the mobile homes. And for one thing, I like my radies that are coming out the woods, I like my deer that's coming out the woods, and I don't need no increase of taking away the trees. I'm older than most of all y'all on the panel, I need to breathe. So we need the trees, and I'm agreeing with everyone here about we don't need the mobile homes.
Thank you, Ms. Lowey.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tiffany Williams, and I also live in Sherwood Forest. I live on the area, I bought my first home in 2007. And my concern is if the mobile home come go further to where my house, my road is, they will be mine in my home. It's called Sherwood Forest, for reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else wishing to speak to council? Same none public comment portion is closed. Pleasure, council. Mr. Chairman? According. Mr. Chairman, I like to recognize. So, let me get this straight. Wetlands, property devaluation, crime rate increase, people over property. I can assure you that this council, from remit, will not be supported. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to not second reading. A big point.
Motion to deny.
We got a second. We got a motion and a second to deny second reading. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor of the motion to deny second reading? Please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Second reading is denied. Ms. Rudman? Or this amendment number 2212.
Oh, 2212 is a request to convert industry reference codes from the standard industrial classification code, known as the SIC code, to the North American Industrial Classification System, known as the NACs code. This application can be brought forward by Sumter County. It will amend all of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10 of the zoning ordinance to make that classification conversion from SIC to NACs, as well as NACs clarification and organizational updates to the overall ordinance. The county currently uses SIC code codes to classify uses by zoning district. We previously kept this system in place to maintain compatibility between our zoning function and our business licensing function because we work together to regulate and enforce land use laws based on the ordinance. In 2020, the South Carolina General Assembly did pass the South Carolina Business License Tax Interization Act, Notice Act 176, to streamline the business license process. It created that same process for taxing jurisdictions across the state, and as part of that process, they actually implemented the NACs code as their classification system for uses for business licensing purposes. So currently, all jurisdictions within South Carolina that have a local business license tax have to comply with the taxing by Act 176 states, and they are categorized by the NACs code. We launched making this change because we wanted to give time for business licensing to, to get that all worked out and straightened out, but now it's time for us to bring the zoning ordinance into alignment with our business licensing uses. Sumter County initiated this amendment to replace our existing reference systems so that we are going from the SIC code to the NACs code. And by this conversion is also being made because it touches so many parts of the zoning ordinance. We're looking at many areas of Article 1 through A to reflect city and county ordinance's respective roles. As I stated the last time we met, back in 1999, when the city and county went to county-wide zoning, those two ordinances were virtually identical. Over the intervening years, they have deviated in their references and forms, but because they were virtually identical, the city ordinance had references to county jurisdictional issues, and the county code had references to city jurisdictional issues. When we made this change to the city code earlier this year, we removed town references, and now that we're making the changes to the county code, we want to remove city references. So we're quick education, what are the NACs codes versus the SIC codes? The NACs code reviews five US governments classified business establishments for the purposes of collecting and analyzing and publishing statistical data related to our business economy. It also has replaced the SIC code since 1997. And in the US, Mexico, and Canada, we use the NACs codes across those three jurisdictions so we can compare apples to apples across those three countries because we have such close economic ties. The SIC code that we're currently operating under has not been touched or updated since 1987, and they have not made any revisions to it. The NACs code is updated on a, we're the five year basis. We are currently working with a NACs code that was adopted in 2022, so it reflects the union industries in our current economy that just did not exist in the 1980s relating to online sales, computer services, and the way industries have used to be very hard in the ways that we have expanded our economic outlook in terms of creating new industries as a result of technology. We're looking at the NACs code structure, it's a little bit similar to how SIC codes work, some more numbers in the code, some more specific to industry, but in this case, a full NACs code is six digits long, for us to represent the industry. The next digit, the third digit designates the economic subsector, with fourth being industry group. The fifth designates the, the NACs industry itself, and then the sixth digit differentiates between the US, Mexico, and Canada. So you can have one industry that have all five of the same numbers, and then when you get to the specific country, that last digit is slightly different. We're talking about conversion and streamlining. Planning staff did create an SIC to NACs crosswalk, reviewed each of the over 250 permitted and conditional uses that were in the ordinance. We matched them to the appropriate NACs code using a tool offered by the Census Bureau, and then that full review of these classifications went to the planning commission, committee of the whole, we marched through that process and reviewed this step by step, and then incorporated those changes and adjustments to exhibit five in Article 3 of the ordinance so that we updated everything from SIC to NACs. Kind of a little more specific on what the proposed amendments will do. We're removing all text references to uses in each zoning district found in Article 3D through 3O. Right now in the ordinance, we have a zoning district, we have a list of permitted uses, a list of conditional uses, and a list of special exceptions, which are being repeated in a tabular format in exhibit five. We're looking at removing that listed usage from each zoning district and moving solely to the table five reference so that we don't have any... so that we don't have any confusion in future updates where we either miss adding it to the list and only adding it to the table, or we add it to the list and we don't add it to the table. We've had that happen in the past, this will streamline that process. We're also going to remove Exhibit four and merge it with Exhibit five. Currently Exhibit four is a use list for residential districts only. We'll put all of the zoning districts in one singular table with all of these classifications listed. And we'll use that Exhibit four for future use if necessary. We're also going to update all of the SIC code references that are in the text of the body in Articles four, five, six, eight, and ten to correspond to the NACs code. And use that for what the master table in Exhibit five is showing. We will also be making some other changes throughout the ordinance for consistency, clarity, and ease of use. So we're ordering some things, we're not removing stuff, but we're moving them to the appropriate sections. And then we're adding some notes to direct people to other places in the ordinance where there are additional criteria that unless you're in the ordinance every single day for eighteen years, you don't know exist. While we transition from the SIC to NACs code as our primary purpose, the other item is that we would like to address all removing some zoning designations from the county code. They don't get used because they just have no purpose. And the county way it's developed, one being a C-ten zoning district, the other being a mixed-use industrial district, which is really better served using a planned development tool, and then also removing the central businesses to a designation. I should note that these changes will not impact the town of Pinewood proper or the town of Matesville. Those two jurisdictions are incorporated on their own, and we do not regulate development within those two town jurisdictional limits. We're also going to remove ordinance provisions related to the Design Review Board and the Design Overlay District, which will be hand-departed, and other related authorizations and procedures and processes that are very specific to the city of Sumter itself. Sumter County does not have any historic overlay districts or special design review districts. While we do have national register properties throughout the county, each of those properties are individually listed on the national register, and they are not close to the intention matters of a design overlay district within the state. Additionally, some of the nonsextensive revisions that we'll be making are to the name and code references to correspond to titles that are now used by NACs. Specifically, when we make conversions from one industry to another, the way that the industry was titled in the SIC code now has a new updated description. So we made those changes. And another change is to improve clarity. Go back to what we were talking about, was removing references to the city of Sumter and the regulatory standards for accounting. I agree with the people of this request. We do believe that this amendment will address the need for modernization of our references to various industries and businesses across the ordinance. And the amendment will also allow removal of several internal inconsistencies within our adopted code. I'm having attorney questions that you may have, and you have a lot to digest.
Hearing none, you will have a public comment prior to taking action. Second reading, public comment portion is now open concerning Ordinance Amendment Number twenty-two twelve, that's presented by Ms. Rowan. Anyone wishing to speak to council? Concerning this Ordinance Amendment, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record. Seeing none, period is closed.
No further.
Second. It's been moved improperly seconded, that we approve second reading on Ordinance Number twenty-two twelve, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Coming down to committee reports. Land News Committee, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Land News did this afternoon, and we had two items on the agenda. First one was the item that we just covered. And I was going to say, but we have much more detail covered. And it could be much more detailed in the seat of the theater. But we wanted a little more detail anyway. And so we have to give you the notice, we have a question, but we met really early. So we threw all those things across there. We also met on the subject of solar development. And we've been having questions last two months about regulating solar development as they come to the county. And different questions about decompressioning and things like that. But we have found out that DEHAC is now taking its home. And hopefully we'll have something during the next legislative year, I guess. During the process, within the next year anyway. We are monitoring it at South Carolina Associations of Counties also. And we'll have regulations and. If you have any recommendations you would like to add, call me, whatever. We can pass that on through our attorneys over there. We will be following this closely. That's all, we have no action.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Come down to report from council members from other meetings, trainings, and conferences. I'd like to report that on July the fourteenth, Councilman Washington and I met with Colonel Smith, who's the wing commander at Shaw, concerning groundwater contamination that is happening around, in areas around the base. He had his engineering team with him. And he was discussing what they are doing to mitigate. And he told us that there was, there was three phases that were taking place. First is to identify the release areas of the chemicals that were used to put out fuel fires. They had identified what they call burn pits. And that's where they were concentrating on. The second phase was to respond to the PFAS releases and to build these great big water filters to remove the PFAS chemicals from the water and then release it back into the groundwater system. And then the third phase is to prevent and protect. We have agreed to have meetings in the future. Correct, Mr. Washington?
Absolutely.
Concerning this problem. So that is my report. Anyone else have any reports?
Well, yes, Mr. Chairman and Councilman Washington. I would like to piggyback on what you're saying. It's good that we had this meeting with Shaw Airport Space and Commander. However, some of the, well, not some, a lot of citizens that live around Shaw Airport Space, or particularly those that live in Sherwood, not Sherwood, the area across the street from the base, they are talking about when did this contamination stop? I was on that base as a member of the United States Air Force from nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty-two. And during my time on that base, a lot of the activity, use of this form by our department was being used. And a lot of people were complaining about the contamination of the water back then. So I've heard people say that this should go back to nineteen seventy, when, when this was first identified and started. But then people are saying that they want to just go back to twenty sixteen. I don't know. But I am looking at the fact that there are people that have had these diagnoses of the illness that they talked about related back to nineteen seventy. So have there been anything from the commander who wants to go back when this origin started? Or they're trying to, in other words, what the people are saying, they're trying to cover it up? So.
That's not the impression that I got, Mr. Stevens.
Okay.
About you, Mr. Washington.
So I think we're still peeling the apple back.
Okay.
And, you know, my focus would be to explore what they're doing now. Also take them back as well. I've heard the same comments. I think the initial meeting was to understand what they were doing now. Get our arms around that and then explore out. But your point is accurate, I've heard the same scenario about the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties. And so we're just jumping into the pond, and we would love for you to join. Subsequent meetings will be taking place, and I do plan to peel that onion back.
I would greatly appreciate it, since I am retired Air Force and since I was stationed on the bases Shaw from nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty-two. And I've heard a lot about what was going on during that period of time. So I would love to talk with Colonel Smith, whatever, participate. Thank you very much.
So the other piece to that is, you know, there had been some initial conversation about reaching out to the legislative delegation, which we may do. But we want to make sure we have our arms around all the information. So we're still fact-finding now, so your comments are time.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Monthly reports, Mrs. Stevens.
On tomorrow, there is an unveiling for school district pilgrims and mobile STEM Explorer and council members are invited to that. The sheriff's monthly report is in, the sheriff's office monthly report is in the packet. As well in the packet is the public works department monthly report. And lastly, the annual conference for the South Carolina Association of Counties being held beginning Monday, July thirty-first. There is one council member that will be graduating from the Institute of Government classes. And other council members are involved in classes. Thank you.
County members, please.
Mr. Chairman, Councilmembers, good evening. Just a couple items I'd like to cover as more of this project updates. I'd like to start with the announcement that this week we will be issuing a purchase order to move on the Judicial Center audiovisual equipment upgrade. As y'all know, we have electrical issue, storm did some severe damage to our system late last year. We've had an opportunity to review that, and we are moving on to a new product. That purchase order will be five hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Like everything else, there's some issues with equipment and timely issuance. So it could be as late as January before we get it completely installed. But we'll be installing it in phases as the equipment arrives. The second item I'd like to report out on is the Capital Penney Sales Tax Series twenty-fourteen. Just an update for council as far as the county roads that remain to be paved. We are issuing over the next three weeks a request for bids on other roads. That will be four point, the last four point two miles of county roads, estimated somewhere around three point three million dollars worth of road improvements. And once the bids have been awarded, they'll have approximately eight months to complete all of them. So hopefully we'll hear some good news on that fairly soon. Also, an update on the, what I'm calling the manory apartment complex. For those who are familiar with the apartment complex that we proposed at the old mental health building at the corner of Lafayette and Allen. Jonathan and I had a conversation last week with the property developers, Mr. Kevin Conley and his associate, Bill Goodman. They informed us that the whole entire process, you know, if you remember this, this involves tax credits from the state to build housing assistance apartments. That whole process was delayed one year due to some issues in Columbia. But that will start back up again. The preliminary applications will be due in December of this year. The applications will be scored in January of next year. Full application, if you get past that phase, will be due in March, in the March of that year of two thousand and twenty-four, and will be award date of July of two thousand and twenty-four. They're still very, very excited about this project. They've now had an opportunity to look at the other projects that have proposed in South Carolina and in Sumter, and feel like our project still rates very high. I think one of the highest projects. We've taken this opportunity, per their request, to go ahead and combine the parcels. If you remember, the building was on one parcel property, and the parking lot was on another. We've combined those, so now it's one parcel that helps them in their grant application. Also, in August, they will be going before the city of Sumter, so that they get the classification of an abandoned building site, which will then give them additional points for the grant application. So although it's taken a little bit of extra time, we believe we're positioning ourselves better for success to project. So that'll give you an idea on that project. The library transition, as you know, the county has now moved the county out to library operations with the county government. Those are going around, regular meetings with our H R. Our finance team continues to work through setting up the new accounts. I T has become a little bit of a challenge. What we didn't realize is their I T services are actually provided through the state of South Carolina through their I T department. So we're trying to coordinate those activities and make sure that it's a smooth transition. Because those, the actual operations and the capital investments with I T is actually paid for by the state of South Carolina. So we want to make sure we're still eligible and move forward in that part. They did have the, the Mobile after Mobile, Bookmobile. Brand open was massive, six people, two seconds ago. Mr. Kane, Chairman of Kane, I attended. It was a wonderful conversation, a lot of young kids. But this Bookmobile will be used all over Sumter County in service of folks that have difficulty and challenges getting to the three library branches we have near downtown. So we're very excited about that, getting that Bookmobile. It's a nice looking vehicle, get a chance to buy that, please look your head. Certainly something that we can be proud of. The last item, I would like to turn it over to Jonathan, attorney. As you know, he's our liaison to the airport. And they have some exciting news out there, like the project on that as well. Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Nixon said, I'm speaking to the county liaison, the airport liaison for the county. And the South Airport is an important element of our economic development initiatives. We see more jets arriving, bringing people from out of state to our county for purposes of conducting business and engaging in leisure activities. So with that, we realized we needed to do something about our ramp out there. That was some old asphalt. And so this is a quick slideshow, it's put together by Hope Consulting. This is before, and what you see is asphalt in distress. And when that starts to happen, you have what's called raveling with little pebbles coming loose in the tar. And you can't allow that to occur, because those pebbles cannot be allowed to go into the intake of the jet engine. So it's constant maintenance to keep that raveling pushed off. Cracking, indicating that the asphalt wasn't safe. And you can see right there, there's a drainage intake. And no one knew either how strong those were. And the copper square inch of weight on a jet wheel and tire is enormous. It's a big, heavy thing, a little bit of quill. We didn't know those would stand up very long. So that was another issue that needs to be addressed. So the first thing had to be done was the asphalt had to be milled up and removed. And then the drainage system was replaced, instead of having three intakes, it was two. Because it's less likely for a jet to roll across two than three. And we had F A certified catch bases installed, so that we know they'll stand up to the weight. Then the subgrade, it's taken all the ground to the dirt, so the subgrade had to be prepared. It had to be stabilized. Remember, we had a lot of rain in the early part of January. The motion for steam was issued on December the fifth, and construction began before Christmas. In January, there's so much rain, it couldn't proceed. So what we ended up doing was stabilizing the dirt with some concrete stabilization. I could save us some money on the back end, because we had to use less rock on top of the subsurface to stabilize. There's the amount of dirt rock going in. And then of course the concrete was on top, and then there's the cleanup catch basin. Let's see, it's pretty sturdy. Let's see, it's pretty scary. Then the joint had to cut, because as you know, the concrete will crack and it's important to make the crackway more to crack, not where you don't want it to crack, you have to solve those points. And then, this is reflected mark and showing the taxi lane. And that's when we ground up a few, we got to get ready to get into a, um, or a, there's a, uh, a jet using it right up the taxi lane. And then, we're, uh, one of our local ministries, bringing executives in, using the new ramp, uh, on a visit to a local plant, it's based in ways and recently expanded, increasing our tax base. And then, here's an air progression, we just talked to the ground level, here's an air, so that's how it was. And you went, uh, the first section, uh, you see, uh, the asphalt was filled and they get done with the subgrade. And more, more of the subgrade, uh, preparation. And then, there goes the, uh, the rock and then the, uh, concrete for the first section. And then, the, uh, second section, where the drainage is installed, was taken down to the drain, taken down to the subgrade. And that's, that's how it looks now, all paved, both sections paved, mark is in place. And there's another jet using the new ramp as a, uh, as a star. So, six months project, the, um, the final inspection was done on June the seventh and everything was done. And this total project, total cost of the project, after everything's said and done, it's only forty, seven, four sixty-eight thousand dollars. The FAA pay nine percent, paid, has paid, will pay nine percent. Scotty Air Force Commission has paid, will pay five percent. It's willing to pay five percent. So, we have four point four million dollar project for five percent. And that's airplane, airport safe and more welcoming to jet traffic, like I say, coming in, bringing them from out there, respect here.
Prior to us going into, uh, public comment, I'd like to recognize, uh, our reporter for the last couple of years, Shelby Gould, and she went and got married on us. And her husband is a member of Shaw Air Force, well, but she's a member of Air Force. And she'll be going to join him in the next couple of months and her, her last day is going to be shortly, right, Shelby?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay. And I guess the only one sitting next to you is your replacement?
Yes, this is Bren Eddie.
What's her name again?
Bren Eddie.
Bren Eddie. Welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for what you've done for us in the past, Shelby.
I'd like to make this moment, Shelby. You made a right decision when you married an Air Force man.
Okay, coming out here, coming out to the public comment portion of, uh, agenda citizens desiring to speak during public comment, uh, limited to up to three minutes. Comments remain through the chairman of county council. There are any questions, they'll be answered after the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak to county council, please proceed to the podium, state your name, put a record.
Mr. Chairman, uh, she's coming up. I also wanted to recognize, Ms. Regina Tucker. She did not share with us when she came up that she is the chairperson for the Sheriff's Advisory Committee, which I also serve on, and she's an excellent chairman. So, I wanted everyone to make sure that we knew who she was. So, if you have any complaints, the chair is here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sheil Vance and I'm an investor here for the city of South Carolina. I have a home that I bought two years ago in, uh, Happy Homes Development and it's off of Think and Milk and Easy Street. And, um, when I purchased my home, I was told by the builders that the road will be paved pretty soon. Well, now it's up and coming on two years and, um, the road has not been paved. So, I'm here, um, as, um, part of the residents because of a lot of new homes that has been built and they have all been moved in by the new residents, which my sister just moved in like thirty days ago. So, we would like to, and I'm here to make the request to have Easy Street or Happy Homes subdivision because it goes around, paved, the road paved. So, I'm acknowledging this, uh, pavement project, so, um, I'm here to support my, um, concerns about that.
Thank you, Ms. Regina.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, council members, staff, citizens, um, the only comments I have, Jordan Bayes, living in Litchfield, sorry, not there, it's been a while. Uh, about the groundwater contamination out in Shaw. I've been hearing about this for quite a while and I've been seeing some of the maps and places where they drilled the wells. My concern is, since I've been here since nineteen eighty-eight, is where are the test wells driven so far? Have they improved, increased the number and locations, decreased them? And if you would, I'm sure you're being briefed on this, but when length was brought up, when you go back, how far are they testing in as far as the radius? If none has been done yet, would it be expanded to look for additional contamination over the decades that has reached up from the lower levels of the groundwater contamination? And has it spread around? That's why I'm asking whether or not now, going further back, will the radius increase? Or did they just say, okay, it's right here and that's it? I want to thank you to keep that in the back of your mind while you're asking out there at the base. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Regina. Anyone else wishing to speak to council?
Good evening. My name is Debbie Sisson. And the last several meetings y'all had, some of y'all seemed to care about the district really more than the district, and I want to thank y'all, but I want to share some of my knowledge that may help y'all in the future. The shortage of teachers and staff has nothing to do with the money. It's mainly their head of human resources refusal to offer positions. And most of the ones that are leaving isn't my either. It's extreme, deadly abuse and us endure from the students, their parents, and less the district. The third delay isn't because of poor teaching. Less is expected academically and behavior wise of these students. Students no longer need a salary in the past, it's only a sixty. And if one is failing, a teacher is told to block them off. So, our district is just burning students down. Teachers and students have to put up with the disruptive students that wreak havoc on a daily basis in the classroom because the district allows it. And here's how much the district cares about the students. The district never want to put the money into the salaries that will directly affect the academics. They would rather pay a six-figure salary to a district level person which is not capable of doing their job and costs that district about a million and funding. In two thousand sixteen, I don't know if you know, they hired a coach and gave all us a six-figure salary that is approximately thirty thousand dollars more than the highest teacher level in that district. And makes more than all assistant principals and more than two principals. And part of this sweep deal was, he doesn't have to teach at all. Not one good. Yet all coaches are required to teach at least one class. And during COVID, with approximately twenty-five employees out at his school, he isn't required to go out one second in the classroom to assist with students. I guess sports is more important to them. They continue to give outrageous bonuses on a regular basis to the district level. And a number of those duplicate positions, they were eliminated. And also, at the end of the year, schools that have any remaining money must spend it or lose it on budgets cuts next year. These are only a few examples of wasting our higher education dollars and managing money that we could save. And let me remind you, they have been begging for years under the same pretense for the teachers, the students, and the essential workers, yet no matter how much money they get, it never goes there. It never makes it there. So, if you really care, start attending those board meetings, visit the district office and see where the place is and where the big money is really going. And I thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sisson. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Jackie Hughes. Chairman of County, County Councilwoman, my fellow citizens. I attended the last two meetings on June twenty-seventh and July eleventh. They weren't in regular meetings. It has taken a minute the last two weeks to gather my thoughts. I remember one council member told us about his past accomplishments. I didn't realize how much he's done for our county. As I was listening to you and I wondered if he should run for the Southern County School Board, the reaction of those attending last time were deceptively, he would be elected. It would be nice to be good accomplished, even more for us, the citizens of Southern County in that capacity. It is sad that there are poor people in our county. Now, we need to root everyone out of the situation that they find themselves in. I remember when I used to write letters to the editor about blacks and poor whites who don't get a proper education. I have never understood why, if they are in the same classes as those who do go on and prosper, can't prosper themselves. I know people tell me that they don't get breakfast, but free breakfast and lunch have been offered for years. I know that they don't have the same resources, but there were twenty agencies in Friday's paper that are giving free book bags and every school supplies. If there are other reasons, then is it something that county council or school board can solve? What would it take to have zero poverty in Southern County? Then there was talk about people having to sign in to be able to talk. Do you know that the school board requires people to not only sign in, but now they're required that you have to talk to a member of the board about your situation first? Then there was talk about being offended by some board members or doing what he was talking. When people tell me that I'm offended by something, it doesn't mean anything to me today. You can realize how easy it is to offend someone? You can look at someone wrong or not, you can say or do something that won't lie, or the best way is using the wrong program. Our country has become a society of victims. We can all become victims or be offended if we look long and hard enough. I'm concerned for those people. The last thing I want to comment on is letting people know that unruly behavior now first will not be tolerated. Do we even know what unruly behavior is today? Maybe that's why we have deputies nearby. My priorities are about us, so I have one last thing to say. I hope that the past two meetings have been pathetic for some individuals. It would be nice if all county council members would get back to doing weaker people business and letting loose the business of people who look like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sisson. Anyone else?
Good evening. Everybody was going in public. I've been up here before, but tonight, I let my brother get a phone, trying to get you, because I had learned something. Most of us don't know anything about the laws until we break them. I called myself. This has been a text message. I had no idea that everybody on the council got copied with the text message because everybody just said, you know, the address. And I discussed something that I was familiar with. It's called the Little Witch Letter. And I don't know how many people have heard about it, but the Little Witch Letter described the conditioning of black people before they were brought here to America. The mind, the indoctrination. And people say it was a lie, but there was a term from the Library of Commerce, so it's real, right? And what I want to do is try to build up the black community and knowledge of our history and our laws. There should be a lot of people here to support the council, but most black people don't get involved. It's not their business. They don't have enough money, or they don't have enough house, or drive a wrecking car, and they just ruin about their business. And we don't know anything about the laws. We don't like the laws. We know the laws, but we don't know anything about the laws until we break them, our family is broken, somebody needs to know. That's where there's a concern. And then, you have to have money and try and fix that. If you can't fix that with money, there's, uh, probation, there's the English replacement, goddamn phone, do that. And so, it's just like, we're, we're causing a, a fault, a loop, or we're not doing it for ourselves, we're doing it better. And I'd like to see more of the black community come here, learn the laws and how things work. I'm just finding out. And that's what I'm, I'm covering because I feel like everybody needs to know. And if you have two children in one classroom, learning the same stuff, if one of his head isn't correct, it's not going to absorb the same information as the next one, how does that happen? Where do they learn? The indoctrination we got before we brought you to America, the law against the government, the old against the young, the law against the people, how to live freely, that still exists. And that's why people don't participate because of the indoctrination. And it needs to change. People want to speak up, people want to learn and not be afraid of the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sisson. Anyone else wishing to speak to council?
Yes, good evening. Council members, you all know me, for the audience that might not know me, my name is Brenda C. Williams, I'm a physician here in town. Uh, my husband and I have been in South Carolina for forty-one years providing healthcare. Um, I thank the council for several things, at least you all give the opportunities for the community to say stuff that is not always true for the city council. Um, citizens are going to have to work on that. The Family Union Incorporated, five oh one C three, non-profit charitable organization is, uh, in our minds. For the county council, please, city council, please, allow monies to go to the Santee Water Re Regional Transportation Authority, the folk called it R T A. Rich and affluent people don't ride the city bus. They might ride it just out of curiosity. I told my grandsons today, I said, you know what, I'm going to park my car and get on the bus. Just ride and see what other folks see. Imagine not having transportation, ladies and gentlemen. We have the wherewithal to get an Uber or Lyft and a car if your car puts you down or what have you. People with little monies can't do that, they can't afford that. So, please, for God's sake, give monies. We are asking for two million dollars to go to the R T A per year from the town. Find the money. Uh, millions have gone to the airport and the airport needs the monies to pay way for planes or the executives to fly in and fly out of South Carolina. Let them fly in and fly out. In the meanwhile, give the poor folk, people with the little money, they get on the city bus to go around town, to go to the mall, to go to Walmart, buy groceries. Give their money, please. Secondly, and I'm going to